Good evening and welcome to the Coon Rapids City Council meeting for Tuesday, February 15, 2022. I would like to invite the Scouts from PAC 419 up front to lead us in the pledge. And if we could all please rise for the pledge. Our front guys right here.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Good job. All right, once you guys back up here and face out this way. There we go. It's fun to have scouts back in the council chambers here. Why don't, why don't we start here? You just introduce yourself and then somebody can tell us why you are here this evening.
My name is Nathan Mattson. I'm 11 years old.
Funny.
My name is Henry Carney. I go to Sand Creek Elementary School and I am 11 years old.
My name is Jeff Burnett. I'm the Cub Master for PAC 3419 and then also the Den Leader for our Wee Blow's 2 Den.
I am Tate Burnett. I am 11 years old and I go to Sand Creek Elementary.
I'm Chris Larson. I go to Sand Creek and I'm 11 years old.
So we are here as part of our Building a Better World adventure. It's one of our, our final steps towards our Arrow of Light, which is the, the highest award you can earn in Cub Scouts. And so as part of this adventure, we've been learning and studying the history of the American flag. We've been learning about what it takes to be a United States citizen and also learning about our community and how our community is different. And so we appreciate the opportunity to be here and appreciate Mayor Cook for kind of walking us through some of the things about Coon Rapids that some of us didn't know before tonight and we're just really appreciative. So thank you.
Thanks, guys, for being here. Thank you.
Councilmember Griscoviac.
Here.
Councilmember Rayrower.
Here.
Councilmember Hernandez Jr.
Here.
Councilmember Geisler.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Carlson.
Here.
Mayor Cook.
Here.
One absent, Geisler.
Thank you. We're looking to adopt the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Carlson.
We're joined by Senator Jim Abler tonight and I know that Senator Abler would like to give a presentation on redistricting. And so I make a motion that we move Senator Abler to the top of the agenda, maybe point one, Mr. Mayor.
Maybe point five or something.
Point five, Mr. Mayor, just a nice.
All right, all right. And I don't think we're going to limit him to redistricting. He just said he'd be brief. I don't know that he's actually here.
What do you like to talk about?
Yeah, what he's here to talk about. All right. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion by Carlson, second by Johnson to adopt the agenda, adding Senator Abler to the beginning of the agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the agenda is adopted. And look at that, Senator Abler, you moved right to the top. So welcome at the, welcome at the ambo there.
Well, thanks. You know, campaign promises, I've promised to be brief, so I guess I better stick with that. Thanks to the scouts. I have a lot of fond memories of being a Cub Scout and a Boy Scout myself. And frankly, we think about what's going on in the whole world and the challenges and then you think about what the scouts stand for and what they've worked to become as young men on the, on the girl's side, the young women and the leaders of what's going to happen. And it just makes me really actually kind of encouraged. So keep it up there, guys, and thanks to the scoutmaster and the parents that work all behind that stuff. So it was an interesting day today. I didn't get to come to the official thing when you had your legislators here, so. But it's, I grew up in Coon Rapids and I was just looking at pictures of my old house and it's up for sale now that the mayor pointed out to me, which is kind of fun. So just on the redistricting part, shockingly, the House and the Senate couldn't quite come to terms. They couldn't quite agree. And so the judges decided today. And so Coon Rapids under that will be represented in two chunks. The 80% piece, which will be connected to Anoka, and then the very southern piece, which will be connected to Champlin, Rogers, and Dayton. So that'll be an interesting mix there. And so in, and I really, I would be brief. So I just want to, that's, I'll leave it at that for now. And I have been privileged to serve Coon Rapids my entire time in office. And so ironically, the, the B side, I think, is that the, the western part of Anoka and the western Coon Rapids looks a lot like what I once represented. And then the other part is, the other slice of Coon Rapids. So it's, and so I mostly came just to like remind you that I'm still available to help you and, and actually, given the way it's going to look, that I'm going to just act as though I have a half again larger district. And I work even, you know, more diligently on behalf of what you all need as it's been my pleasure to do anyway. Highway 35, I mean not 35, the, the Highway 10, Third Lane, and, and other things that may come along. It's nice that we got Bridge over Hanson. I know you have some other projects you're trying to work on. And so, and so the nice thing, I, just to the young men here, you know, there's, if you read much about politics, you think it's like this. But most things that get done are actually worked out by, in a cooperative way, much as the council's up here with opinions, but sorting things out and then you actually, eventually have to run the place. So Senator Newton, who was originally my, one of my, my original opponent, and I are now friends and we work together. Senator Hoffman, Zach Stevenson, and Aaron Kegel, we're actually quite collaborative in what can we do to make it better for the people who live in this, this wonderful city. So it's actually kind of nice when you get to the level of operation, operating a city and things that just help people get along and we can actually work together and get things done and try to sort it out. And so to the, to the young scouts here, that's the better way, in my opinion. And so I could go on a long time, but I promised I'd be brief. So, Mr. Mayor, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer that. I know you have a lot of business ahead.
I think, I think we're good, Senator.
All right.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Thanks again for your consideration and even though I don't represent a lot of you, still call on me to help out along with my peers in the House and Senate. We do really like to get things done for you all. So thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have the Coon Creek, Coon Creek Watershed District. Dawn is here. Hi.
Thank you, Mayor, council staff for giving me time to talk tonight. My name is Dawn Doring. I'm the Public Relations Coordinator for Coon Creek Watershed District and I'm here tonight to honor one of your staff for their high level of service. In fact, their name has come up so much for us in this regard that we, it prompted us, or I should could say precipitated, that we have developed a program award, a Partner of the Year Award because of his example. This person, despite a heavy workload, will take on extra work and not, will be the first to take it on and the last to complain, who responds to many questions we give him, phone calls, emails promptly, courteously with direct answers, always very professional, who exemplifies leadership by coming to the table regularly with win-win solutions for the city of Coon Rapids, us partner agencies, and the community, always foremost the community. Who, one, we were out giving an HOA presentation and we talked about how we work with the city and this person in particular. Someone piped up from the HOA and said, oh, we know him. We just love him. He is so helpful and always so polite. So simply, he is a model of public service and you can be proud he's on your staff. So on behalf of the Coon Creek Watershed District and our inaugural Partner of the Year Award, we'd like to give this award. We hope he'll like it. It's utilitarian in nature. An engraved box, pen and pencil set for your city engineer, Mark Hanson.
All right.
Congratulations, Mark, and thank you. This is a surprise for him. Thank you for all you do for the community.
And we find it to be very polite and love him as well, so.
You're welcome.
That's awesome.
Yeah, you have to say something, Mark. After that, you have to say something, Mark.
He picked a good night. Public hearing for our street reconstruction project to present this. Thank you very much and it's an honor to, to work here as a staff person and be a contributing person on the staff and helping the community just grow and, and continue to thrive in the right direction. So thank you so much.
All right, thanks.
Thank you, Dawn.
Mark, we really do appreciate you as well. We just don't have a pen set for you, you know.
We'll see how he does tonight.
All right. Next on our agenda this evening, we have the Crooked Lake Area Association presentation. Mr. Friday.
Hello, Joel Friday here. I represent the Crooked Lake Area Association as the city watchdog. So I pay attention to what's going on in the city for the association and I also like to report once a year or once every six months on what's going on with the lake. We've got the newsletter that we publish and I'll hand you guys a copy when I'm done here. And I was going to go into some stuff, but right before the meeting, I was handed this note from the city and I just wanted to read it because it actually sums up what I would say anyway. The, the letter is in just to getting a grant from the DNR and the association requested a letter from the city of Coon Rapids and Andover as they're both partners with us in keeping the lake going. This is from Tim. He says, "The city of Coon Rapids has historically partnered with the Crooked Lake Area Association and city of Andover on the vegetation management of Crooked Lake. Over the years, our treatment efforts have resulted in increasing water quality and most recently demonstrated by its first ever A grade from the Coon Creek Watershed District," who is just here oddly enough, "in the Met Council grading system." So there was a nice write-up in the Coon Rapids Herald, or whatever it's called these days, on that. "One of the few lakes in the north metro area that has access to boating, fishing, swimming. Crooked Lake is a valuable resource to the residents of Coon Rapids and the surrounding communities. In 2018, they did the park redevelopment and we thank you guys for that, that during the COVID event, that park was flooded with people." I mean, I live across the lake from it, 100 people there all the time, you know, from sunup to sundown, there was 100 people out there enjoying the park. So that was great to see. And, you know, it wasn't just the redevelopment, but it was partially, you know, hey, what else do we do? Hey, what's going down to the lake? And so they had fun with that. You know, one of the things we had this winter that was kind of fun, we did an ice carousel, which is one of the Andover residents. Dan Anderson goes out there and what he does is he cuts 100-foot circle in the ice and they take a couple of trolling motors and they spin it. And then he took a 20-foot circle in the middle of it and he spun it the other direction this year, so just for something different. And they put Christmas trees on it so you can walk out on this spinning chunk of a million pounds of ice. CTN did a great video of it, so if you haven't had a chance to take a look at that, go look at the ice carousel on CTN. He did a nice write-up of why we do it and that. This Saturday from 1:00 to 3:00, one of the residents from Coon Rapids has developed an ice arena out there and they've invited the community to come out and join us for a free skate out there. That's from 1:00 to 4:00 out there on the ice. I would say Crooked Lake is probably one of the hidden gems in the city. I've lived in Coon Rapids since 1980 and, you know, for a while we forgot about the lake because you couldn't go swim there. But I started going down there and watching the sunsets and fell in love with it and eventually bought a place on the lake. And the turnover on the lake has been greater and greater and people are doing a lot of renovations on the lake. They just sold one of the last vacant lots on the lake for $280,000 or something like that and the guy put up a $500,000 house on there. So people are spending money to be on and enjoy the lake. We appreciate the partnership that Coon Rapids provides us. You don't ask a lot of questions, you know, you kind of know what we're doing. We're doing it for the lake, we're doing it for the community and it's just a great organization. If you have a chance, Thursday evening, 6:30, Legacy Christian Academy will be our winter general meeting. Feel free to join us over there and hear what's going on at the lake. We're going to be voting for a new president, new vice president, and a few other positions as well on our board. So love to see you come out. You know, Cub Scouts, it'd be a great thing to get out there and, you know, find a project or two. We were looking for people to stencil drains and things like that, so if you ever have, you know, a project you need to do for community service, get in touch with us. Our email is on the, on here, so I'll pass that out, but it's pretty simple. It's crookedlaa@gmail.com. Reach out to us. If you want to be seeing what we're doing on a regular basis, the Crooked Lake Area Association has a great Facebook page. You can go out to that and follow that and I can put you on our mailing list as well. Again, I just want to thank you and if you have any questions, let me know.
Joel, your annual meeting is Thurs- this Thursday?
Correct.
Have you guys talked about the, the study that came out of the U. February 1st on wake boats?
We have talked about that a little bit because it's a very popular thing on our lake. It's, it's, it's a concern and at the same time, being a lakeshore owner, I realized it's not the main problem. I started losing lakeshore, so I talked to the DNR what to do. They gave me some hints. I followed their suggestions and, you know, the wake boats can cause some problems, but for the most part, when you have a northeast wind hitting you on high water for a month, that'll take out more lakeshore than the lake, wake boats ever will.
And, and I wasn't suggesting action was needed. I would just want to make sure that you are aware of the study.
Yeah, yeah, no, absolutely. It's, it's an interesting thing. The beautiful thing is wake boats, jet skis, paddle boaters, if you can do it on the water, you see people out there doing it. So I highly recommend getting out there any time of the year. Well, the only time you really can't do anything on the lake is thaw and freeze, you know. And, you know, so it was interesting, the fire department was out there doing some ice rescue testing and I'm looking out there and going, what is that? I didn't see any fire trucks, I didn't see any police and I'm like, I finally called 911, it's like, there's people in the water, I don't know what they're doing, you know? And, you know, so.
It was a very cold day, too.
It was, yeah. I mean, they went through the ice, so it was not, you know, so, you know, it's, it's great to see that and, you know, if any of the city departments are doing anything on the lake, it's always good to let us know and then I can publish that out to the citizens so they're not calling 911 over something. As mundane as that, you know, and, you know, it's, it's, you know, I don't want to see anybody drowned out there, so.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Friday.
You're welcome.
Thank you for all the great work you guys are doing out there.
Thank you. Thank you. The lake looks great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next on our agenda is the approval of the February 2nd minutes.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rayrower?
I make a motion to approve the minutes from February 2nd.
Second.
Motion by Rayrower, second by, wow, I just, just drew a blank. It was just gone. It hasn't come back yet.
Griscoviac.
Thank you, Griscoviac. Wow.
He happens to do the best of us.
I think I better have some, a couple more coffee here. All right. Motion by Rayrower, second by Griscoviac. Any correction or discussions? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? And those minutes are approved. We have five items on our consent agenda. The first one is item four this evening, and that's to approve a refund of a liquor license fees for Pappy's Cafe. Everybody that's paying attention saw Pappy's sold out and is now the Barrel House Bar and Cafe. The timing was such that they had to buy a liquor license for 2022, but only used it for just a very short time as the Barrel House Bar and Cafe also has a liquor license. So we were looking to refund 11 months' worth of the license fees for a total of $9,913.75. So we're looking to approve a refund of a liquor license fee for Pappy's Cafe, 11496 Martin Street Northwest, in the amount of $9,913.75. Next item, which is item five on our agenda this evening, is to approve a therapeutic massage enterprise license. We're looking for, Ms. Morales has previously held a massage license at this location for the same business from 2018 through 2020. She chose not to renew in 2021 and now would like to reopen the business for 2022. She has paid the background investigation and license fee for a therapeutic massage enterprise license. She has also provided proof of the required liability insurance. Approval is contingent upon the police department background, background investigation findings as well as the issuance of a certificate of occupancy by the building inspections department. So we're looking to approve the issuance of a therapeutic massage enterprise license to Massage for Health LLC located at 299 Coon Rapids Boulevard, Suite 208, pending a successful background investigation and the issuance of a certificate of occupancy by the building inspections department. Next item on our agenda is item six, which is the third item on our consent agenda. We're looking to adopt Resolution 22-32, approving the recycling center fees. The Coon Rapids Recycling Center provides the community with recycling and reuse options with a focus on hard-to-manage materials. The goal is to recoup disposal costs while keeping fees at a rate that will provide accessibility to all. Last year, approximately 2.2 million pounds of recyclables were collected at the recycling center with generated revenue going back into the citywide recycling program. Recycling materials are commodities, which do require some flexibility and adjustment of rates at times. For this reason, recycling center fees have not historically been included with other city fees, fees reviewed and approved by the city council. However, the staff follow market conditions and have been able to minimize variability of these fees through annual agreements with vendors. If conditions drastically shift throughout the course of the year, staff will evaluate the potential impacts to these fees and take appropriate action. So we're looking to adopt Resolution Number 22-32, approving the 2022 fees for the Coon Rapids Recycling Center. And there's probably about a dozen bullet points on here of, with different prices. Item seven is just an informational item only. There's a corporate officer change at Costco Wholesale. City code requires that the city council be notified of any change in legal ownership or beneficial interest of a liquor license holder. And the email that we received advised that the following individuals are new officers to Costco Wholesale Corporation and that is Roland Michael Vacris, President, and Gary Dean Swearingen, Assistant Secretary. Again, that was provided for information only. And then item eight, which is the last item on our consent agenda, is to adopt Resolution 22-34, calling for a public hearing to vacate drainage and utility easements located at 8945 Evergreen Boulevard. We're being asked to consider a resolution to set a public hearing for drainage and utility easements vacation. At the December 16, 2020, 21 Planning Commission meeting, Conforty Holdings received a conditional site plan approval to construct a building expansion and other site improvements at 8945 Evergreen Boulevard. And as part of the approval, drainage and utility easements need to be vacated. A new easement will be brought to the city council for acceptance at a future date. A vacation petition may be initiated by the city council upon adoption of a resolution by four-fifths majority. Resolution 22-34 calls for a public hearing on March 22, 2022 at City Hall. So we're looking to adopt Resolution 22-34, which calls for a public hearing on March 22, 2022 for a vacation of drainage and utility easements located at 8945 Evergreen Boulevard.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Johnson?
I move approval and adoption of the various items on the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Carlson. Any discussion or questions from the consent agenda? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? And the consent agenda is adopted. Next item on our agenda is item nine, which is to hold public hearing and assessment hearing, consider resolutions 22-1, Sub 6A ordering project, and 22-1, Sub 8 approving plans and specs. Mr. Hanson, I have a feeling this is going to be your show for a little while this evening.
Good evening, Mayor Cook and, and city council. I have a, a short presentation here that describes from a high-level perspective the, the street reconstruction program that we have planned for 2022. I'm not going to go into a lot of the details of construction. We've had a couple of open houses. There's a lot of information on the, the city website about what we plan to do this year. Schedules will be coming out this spring before we start any work, but if you have questions here tonight, I would love to get ahold of you and talk to you about that. I have business cards right at the end of the table over there and we can make sure that any questions or concerns you have about the details of our project are answered. So a little bit about the project background. For both of these projects that are proposed, our 22-1 and our 22-2 project, the streets that are proposed for reconstruction this year were raided in the spring of last year as deficient or in poor condition. We talked to our public works department about where they're spending the most time, sealing cracks, filling potholes, doing work on our streets, and that's where we go to do these projects. And then staff first met with council last July, or July of 2021, and that's where we provide recommendations for the streets that are in the progress year. So the schedule for both projects, we had an open house meeting for all the property owners affected on October 13 of 2021, and then on January 26 of this year, we had another open house. Tonight, we are here to hold the public hearing and the assessment hearing for the projects and then council would presumably approve the plans and the specifications and order the advertisements for bids. On October 19, staff will, will recommend to council a ward of both project contracts. And then on May 13, that would be the night where we would recommend adoption of the assessments. So after May 3, people would have an opportunity to pay the assessments if they so choose to at that time. We plan to have another informational meeting in a nearby city park with the contractors that are selected and then we'll have schedules in early May. So there would be a great opportunity for people to ask questions, too, about the, the sequence of construction and all of those details that go along with these, these large, complex projects. Construction from a broad perspective is going to go from May to October, but each specific area of the project is going to be more on an eight-week timeframe. So once again, we'll, we'll get schedules out to all the affected properties before any work starts. We do have weekly updates that we offer every Friday. These are broad updates that don't talk, really, they don't drill down to the specifics of what might be going down or on directly in front of your house exactly, but they do offer some notice about what we plan to do the upcoming week and people can sign up to receive email updates when those, those updates are available on our website. We are also looking at having the ability to do text message updates for things that come up and we need to make notifications in a, a rapid manner. for things that come up, and we need to make notifications in a rapid manner. So we'll have that available, too, to communicate with affected property owners. The estimated costs for the projects are as follows. Approximately $6.00 million total for Project 22-1 and $5.5 million for Project 22-2. The project costs would be spread over various city funds and then special assessments to affected or benefited properties. The 2022 assessment rates are $2,240 for a single-family residential property. And just to be clear, all single-family residential properties pay the same. Doesn't matter if you are a corner lot, interior lot. We just, our policy, we, all of them pay the same. Duplexes, townhomes, apartment properties do, however, pay a different rate, and that is $29 per front foot. Commercial properties, $56 per front foot, and industrial properties are $71 per front foot. Various different ways to pay the assessment. We do recognize that this might be a surprise or would be a surprise to affected property owners, so we do offer various ways for people to be able to pay it. The first option is that they can pay the entire assessment amount between May 3 and June 33, and there's no interest charged. We do charge interest for these assessments because that's essentially us passing on our bonding costs. Majority of costs are paid for through bonding, and there's interest the city needs to pay for that. So we pass that interest on as people pay it off over the 10-year timeframe offered. Option two is that property owners pay off between June 4 and November 15, and then plus any interest that would be accrued up until that point. And then the third option would be to simply do nothing, and the assessment will roll over to the 2023 property taxes. So if you happen to be a single-family resident property, you would wind up paying about $307 of interest over 10 years at a rate of 2.41%. So that total assessment would then be $2,547 and some change. So an annual amount that you would see on your property taxes would be $255 over the 10 years. So why do we assess? A lot of people ask this question, and one of the reasons, there's several different reasons, but our property taxes, the property taxes that we pay every year, the policy, the intent of the policy is for those taxes to pay approximately 50% of the street surfacing cost. However, in reality, due to the number of properties that are on these projects, the orientation and the ability for the city to assess them, city costs actually pay 70% of those surface costs. And the special assessments actually allow the city to be able to raise money without increasing the general taxes overall citywide, thus allowing us to be able to bond for a good, the city's portion of what the project cost is. Special assessments also apply to the properties that impact the road but are exempt from taxes. So this would include schools, churches, nonprofits. Everybody that uses and impacts the road has to pay a special assessment. And then there are no assessments for sewer and drainage repairs that are included as part of these projects. Those are funded by your utility bill. So what are our neighbors assessing? Once again, Coon Rapids is at the bottom of the spectrum on what all of, some of our neighbors, anyway, are assessing their residents. So these are the ones that we could get information back from in order to kind of compare an apples-to-apples scenario. Just a slide here that depicts what our notification forms look like. For those that are in the audience, those that are watching from home, the projects will include temporary daytime water shut-offs. And we will let you know at least 24 hours in advance of when those are planned for. And what you want to look out for is the pink tag on the left of the screen that will notify you when we plan to shut off water. That's going to happen between 8:00 AM and 4:00 PM, Monday through Friday only. Other impacts to your properties, such as concrete curb, impacts to your driveway or your access, would come through a notification form that you see on the right. Lots more information available on our city website about what our projects look like, the sequence of our projects, a lot of the frequently asked questions that we get about how these projects work. We have videos available on the website that property owners can watch. So the first project is 22-1, and those are the streets that are shown in red on the graphic on the screen. The streets are north of 119th Avenue, east of Round Lake Boulevard, south of the BNSF railroad tracks. So all of those streets, except for the private streets that are in that area, are planned to be reconstructed as part of this project. And then we're also including streets that are south of 119th, between Carey and Johnquill Streets down to 117th Avenue, as well as the cul-de-sac of 117th Lane east of Northdale Boulevard. And this project will resurface 4.2 miles of road. It's going to replace any damaged curb and gutter, repairing any storm, sanitary sewer manholes. We'll install additional stormwater catch basins where it's feasible to assist with any localized drainage problems that we're aware of or that residents let us know about. We plan to replace water main valves and hydrants throughout all of the streets. We also plan to replace the water main trunk system and all of the associated services on the water mains on Woodbine, Vintage, and Undercliff Streets from 119th Avenue to approximately 600 feet north. And then we also plan to construct a new concrete sidewalk on the north side of 119th Avenue from where it ends just west of Wedgewood Drive all the way over to Round Lake Boulevard. So property owners that are affected by that particular sidewalk, some of which are outside the assessment zone for this project because they would have been assessed when we reconstructed 119th Avenue about eight, nine years ago, received a separate letter notifying them about the sidewalk. And then lastly, we also plan to upgrade all of the city-owned streetlights to LED. At a minimum, we'll be updating the fixtures to LED. In some cases, if the poles themselves are in bad shape, we'll replace that as well. But the existing high-pressure sodium lights are getting more difficult and expensive to replace each year, and the LEDs are much more efficient. And so we plan to go with that, which is our new city standard citywide. So with that, we did receive one written objection for this particular project. I passed out a copy of that, that city staff and a clerk received prior to this meeting to council for their review. I'll answer any questions that the council has, and then turn it over to council to hold the public hearing.
Thank you. Councilmember Carlson?
I just have one question, Mr. Hanson. How old are these roads?
That's a great question, Councilmember Carlson. They are approximately 30 to 35 years old.
Is that not going to be original, then?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Rayrower?
Thank you, Mr. Hanson, for your presentation. I just want to commend how we're able to keep our special assessments quite a bit lower than the surrounding communities. That's excellent. I also appreciate the 10-year option, which is, I think it was 255 a year. That's a good option for those that can't afford to pay the full assessment upfront. So I was glad, I'm glad to see that that's available. And our roads are really well-maintained in Coon Rapids at a very low cost compared to other surrounding communities. And I know that's through the good work of our city staff and the planning that it takes to do so. And then I really appreciate the LED lighting because that's going to save electricity and cost. It's really a win-win. My question is, does this increase property value once the street is done?
That's a great question, yes. And the studies that we have done with independent appraisers in the past have informed us that the typical benefit to the property is about $4,000 to $5,000.
Okay, thank you.
That, the monthly, if you let it roll into your taxes, wasn't that that 307 number that you had in there, or what?
307 was the total interest amount that one would pay over 10 years.
Oh, the total interest for 10 years?
The total interest amount.
Over and above the principal.
Okay, all right. All right, so it ended up to be 255 a year, is that what it was?
Yep.
Yeah, okay. All right.
That's what I did when they did it in my street.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
The interest rate is, I think, like, less than 2.5%.
All right. Any other questions of Mr. Hanson before we open the public hearing? And then for clarification, if anybody's here to address us on the sidewalk, that's part of this project. 22-1.
That is correct. We have a short segment of sidewalk on the other one, but it's a longer stretch on this one, correct. And there are no assessments that are tied to the sidewalk specifically.
Right, right. But I'm guessing that there might be somebody here for that, though. I'm just guessing. I don't know. Maybe not. Okay. Counsel, we ready to open the public hearing? All right. Thank you, Mr. Hanson. So at this time, in the case of 22-1 Sub 6A and 22-1 Sub 8, we'll open the public hearing if anybody would like to address council in the public hearing or the assessment hearing on this. Anybody here to address council? Oh, yeah, come up here and introduce yourself and...
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, I actually just had one small question. When looking at the details here, it says that there are different costs for duplexes, townhomes, that kind of thing. If you have a duplex that's in a cul-de-sac, generally, when you calculate cost, it's by curb foot. And so we were just wondering, the people in the area that I live in, how is that assessed for a cul-de-sac?
Yeah, Mr. Hanson? Still be individual, wouldn't it?
Sorry, not sure if I said Sean Novak. Yeah, we, again, live in a cul-de-sac. The areas of land, the plots of land are actually wedge-shaped. And so the point of land is up against the curb.
So if it's a cul-de-sac that consists of single-family properties, it's the 2240 rate, 2,200, it's a single family. It's classified as a single-family home. So if there is a twin home that is listed on the tax statement as a twin home or a condo or something like that, what we do is we take the entire footage of the street, both sides, multiply that by the multifamily rate and divide it by the number of units. I don't recall that that was the case here this year, but it does come up with the quad homes in the next project. We use that formula.
All right. Is there anybody else here to address the council for the public hearing and assessment hearing for this first section of the project? Yes, sir.
My name's Dean Peterson. I live at 12170 Zia Street. I'm just wondering what the inconvenience will be. I couldn't attend any of the sessions to learn about what's going on, but what's the inconvenience as far as garbage collection, mail? My wife does a home daycare. What is the inconvenience going to be to shut off water? I know it's going to be 24 hours, so we're going to have to figure out some water strategy there. But what kind of inconvenience will it be for, like, garbage collection, postal service, that kind of thing?
Those are all really good questions. And a lot of it's going to depend on whether they're doing the curb in front of your house.
Yes, thank you. That's a great question. So when it comes to garbage service, that's going to function just like it does today. There's not going to be any change to that. When it comes to mail delivery, correct, Mayor Cook. It depends on how much curb work we're doing on the street. So when we replace long linear stretches of curb and gutter, we do that by a slipform method with a large machine that requires at least three feet behind the curb to get in and to actually replace that. So that impacts all of the mailboxes. So if we're doing long linear stretches, and you can tell before we start by looking at the white lines with the arrows, we'll mark the curb. Or you could call us, and we'll be able to let you know. But that is where we have to set up a temporary row of mailboxes. And the contractor that we work with typically is the same one that does this for us year after year, regardless of who the general contractor is. They're very good at working with the post office, identifying a location that's kind of just outside the periphery of the project area. Or we would have to stage it in a way that we kind of put it right outside the construction zone, and then people can drive up to that. The mail carrier is able to drive up to that and then deliver their mail. So we get out, of course, notifications, letting everybody know how that's going to happen before we do any of that work. Nobody has to do anything with their mailbox. We do all of the work. The only thing we ask you to do if we do have to take your mailbox down temporarily is to put it in a safe spot, and then we'll hand out another notice about six weeks later, whenever we come back to put it back in, just asking you to put it in a place that we can find it so we can put it back in.
Just as a clarification, I don't know that we've ever, we don't have water off for 24 hours at a time.
No, no, no. So 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM is the, Monday through Friday. Some people in the past have read the notices as it would be overnight or over the weekend. That's not true. That's not any of our intent to ever do that. However, it is underground plumbing work on a very large scale, and sometimes things don't go as planned. So that's why we have the text message update to be able to let people know if we're running late on getting the water turned back on, we're going to send you a text update to say, hey, we're a little bit behind. Hopefully, it gets on by 5:00 instead, so.
Yeah, and if your wife runs a daycare out of there, I would stay on a first-name basis with Mr. Hanson.
That's a normal circumstance every summer for us to deal with that, yep.
Councilmember Anderson?
Will there be some kind of timeframe when notifications go out? Just looking, just with the great questions that he had asked, when it comes to the safety of the residents with the amount of vehicles, construction going on in those neighborhoods, will there be some kind of timeframe, notification, like, a day or two days? Like, hey, let you know, October 22, you know, we will be having vehicles out there? Because I had a conversation with the constituent today about that because they had some new construction homes in their cul-de-sac. And he brought up, you know, that same, those concerns, and, you know, when it comes to the garbage or the mail. So, you know, if there's some kind of adequate timeframe to send out to the residents that it's going to affect.
Yeah, so this is a city-administered and led project by city staff. It's a contractor, a private contractor, that's doing the work. And because they are in charge of their schedule and their subcontractors and their sequence of work, they are required to send out notifications. So we let everybody know 24 hours in advance before we start ripping up curb, before we start grinding up asphalt, before we're going to repave that asphalt. Major operations, impactful operations, we hand out the notices. We notify of the water shut-offs 24 hours in advance for residential, but 48 hours for commercial properties if we happen to impact one of them. So it's not a perfect process always, but we, I think, you know, overall, we do a pretty good job. And certainly, if anybody's got any questions or concerns, they can always call us. We have a project inspector that's also out there 100% of the time, making sure everything's running smoothly. He's there to answer questions, make sure the work is being done to our city standards. So there's a lot of ways that we try to communicate.
All right, so let's finish the public hearing, though, I'm sorry. Is there anybody else here to address council on this particular issue? Mr. Brody?
If I may, it's also an opportunity. We have received one written objection, but this hearing is also an opportunity for that. So I just want to remind folks, if they do have an objection up until the time the public hearing is closed, that's their opportunity. Once the hearing is closed, they no longer have that.
So do you, let's place the litter. Do we read that in?
No, we received it before tonight.
Okay. Okay, all right.
Part of that consideration, I guarantee, so next time we consider those.
Okay, all right, thank you, Mr. Brody. Anybody else to address council for the public hearing? Yes, sir. Please come to the mic and give us your name and address.
I'm 11864 Carey Street, Troy Wykanet, um, the, um, uh, my question is about the sidewalk on the north side of 119th, right now it doesn't go all the way to Round Lake Boulevard? Okay, it, it's, it's quits before that, so now, when you're done, it'll go all the way, okay, so there'll be an addition, other, or there'll be, it's going to extend the sidewalk, so now on both sides of 119th, they're going to be from Round Lake all the way to Northdale, or, yeah, well, the railroad tracks, yes, yes, okay, now, on the south side, the concrete is up and buckled, is that going to get fixed?
So, um, that is not typically part of, well, that, that would not be part of this project's scope, but we do go around and look at those circumstances, and so if you want to let me know, or I will make a note of it, and we'll take a look at that, and, and we, we typically replace those shorter sidewalk segments with our typical yearly sidewalk maintenance program.
Okay, because it's been there for a couple of years, and, and with the COVID thing, we've done a lot more running and walking on sidewalks than normally, and it's between Pheasant Park and Carey Street, the, um, it, it buckles pretty, there's, there's a couple sections that are pretty.
Thank you for letting me know, yep.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else to address council for the public hearing, assessment hearing on this one? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Julie I. Hacker, I live at 11908 Wedgewood Drive, um, just a question on, I noticed in the letter, it said if you were 65 or older, it could be delayed, is that 65 right now, or before it happens, or anytime this year?
Wow, that's a really specific question.
It is, isn't it? Because I'm going to be 65 this year.
I don't think she's asking for a legal opinion.
Can't wait.
I, I don't know, do we know?
Do we have a specific?
I don't know off the top of my head, obviously, we're not issuing the, or we're not assessing it tonight, it would be assessed, I believe, the May meeting.
May, so by then, probably?
By then, will you be?
No.
Then I'll have to dig a little deeper.
Okay, and then the next question was, um, and I, I don't know if you'll be able to answer or not, because I know that, like, on other assessments, because I used to be a realtor, on other assessments, when an assessment is assessed to a home, if you don't pay it, um, and you go to sell the house, you still have to pay it before you sell the house, well, on this one, that 10-year assessment is added to the taxes, and you're paying it on yearly, but what if you sell the house before that's done, does it go with you and you pay it, or does it go, move on to the new homeowner?
It's, it stays with the property, it can either be paid at closing, or they can, they can assume them, Mr. Friday's chomping at the bit to answer this as well, but.
Okay, give it to the new homeowner.
Yeah, but, but it, it, you know, it's, it's all negotiated in the purchase agreement.
It, it runs with the land.
Yeah, but it does run with the land, yeah.
Yeah, that looks, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel and mayor, if I may, we, we, while we do have the option to defer an assessment for senior citizens or active-duty military personnel, it should be noted that it does go up for the interest rate, I think it's a 6% interest rate, which is, follows statutory requirements for the city to have to do that that way, but it doesn't go away, it's still there on the property.
Mr. Hanson is correct, and it does tend to then, to be a, a fairly bad deal, given what Councilmember Johnson pointed out with the interest rates where they're at on the current ones, so, um, while it is available by statute, we do encourage folks to take a look and see if the 10-year plan is probably a better option.
Sure, all right, um, anybody else to address council on this public hearing, assessment hearing?
Thanks, Mayor.
Mr. Stemwaddle?
I did get one question from the Zoom meeting, if I may, I'll read that into the hearing, um, Mr. Dave Kleba asked if they'll need to schedule changes to other commercial deliveries such as newspapers, FedEx, Shwans, et cetera.
That's a good question, and we've never had anybody had, had to do that, um, so the, the road will function much like it does today, um, with some congestion and some level of interruption, and, and what I mean by that is you might go down a certain street, have to turn around and kind of drive back the other way, and, um, but those are, are short-term in nature, uh, it'll be a gravel surface, uh, when it's not asphalt, so you'll be able to, to drive on that, so we've never had or heard of any circumstance where, where people have had to reschedule deliveries, in fact, during COVID, we've had a lot more delivery trucks with Amazon and everything else, and we haven't had any issues with that, nobody has called and had any concerns.
Anybody else on Zoom? All right, we're going to go ahead and close the public hearing then on this item, and.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Ray Rower?
I have one last question for Mr. Hanson, um, you had mentioned water could be off, was eight to four Monday through Friday, what is the average length of time and days that somebody's water gets turned off in these, in this project?
Great question, it's usually two to three days, until we can, you're kind of outside that isolation zone where we get to another mainline valve, and we have all the valves within replaced, so I would say it's usually like a two to three day timeframe.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. And then, um, seems like we need a full majority, we need everybody on this one, don't we?
Supermajority on the item B, ordering the improvements, I'd ask that you, council is considering to take them separately, and supermajority in this case would require all six council members that are present.
Okay, very good. What are your wishes, council?
Your Honor.
Councilmember Ray Rower?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 22 dash one sub six A, ordering the improvement and, uh, Resolution number 22 dash one, am I on the right one?
One at a time.
If we just do one.
Oh, one at a time, okay.
The one that requires a supermajority, don't make it easier.
All right.
I should have jumped in when you paused there.
Okay, okay.
Second.
Okay, motion by Ray Rower, second by Carlson, any discussion? Hearing no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and that motion carried, that was our supermajority. Now, item C.
Okay.
Councilmember Ray Rower?
I make a motion to adopt Resolution number 22 dash one sub eight, approving plans and specifications and ordering advertisement for bids.
Second.
Motion by Ray Rower, second by Carlson, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and that motion carries, and we're on to our next item, um, item 10. Mr. Hanson?
Thank you, your honor, uh, so the next project is Project 22 dash two, it's the streets that are shown in blue on the left of the graphic above on the screen, uh, those streets are north of 119th Avenue, Blackfoot Street, and the border with the city of Anoka on the west, all the way up to Wedgewood Drive on the north, and then Round Lake Boulevard on the east, the project also includes Zia Street between Blackfoot Street and 119th Avenue, and then the streets that are south of 119th Avenue, east of Round Lake Boulevard over to Silverrod Street. The scope of work for this project is, is really the same as the other street reconstruction project, the mileage is a little bit less at 3.6 miles, we plan to replace all of the damaged curb and gutter, repairing storm sewers and any sanitary manhole structures and castings, we will be installing additional storm sewer structures to take water from localized drainage issues or problems that we have or find out about, uh, we will be replacing all of the water main valves and hydrants throughout all of the streets, uh, the, the new sidewalk segment is on the south side of Zia Street, uh, just east of Blackfoot Street, so just a short stretch there, where we have a gap in the existing network, and then, again, planning to replace all the LED fixtures at a minimum, but in some cases, fixtures plus poles were condition warrants. So far, city staff has not received any written objections for this particular, be happy to answer any questions that the council has.
Okay, council have any questions about this project before we open the public hearing, Councilmember Carlson?
Mr. Hanson, I just wanted to, uh, go back to this project, are these roads, were these roads constructed about the same time as the other side of?
Generally in the same timeframe, yep.
Is there anything unique about this project that would make it much different than the other project, other than the addresses and the streets?
No appreciable differences, no, thank you.
All right, any other ques, questions for Mr. Hanson? Then, in the case of twenty-two dash two six A and twenty-two dash two sub eight, um, we're opening the public hearing and the assessment hearing, if anybody lives on any of those 27 streets and would like to address council, now is your time for the public hearing on those. Starting to get terrified of what everybody's here for. Yes, sir, um, can you come up, or do, if, or do you, okay, otherwise, we could bring you a mic if you wanted.
That might be easier. Yeah, wait, thank you, Mayor.
Hi, my name is Jonathan Mitchell, I live at 12100 Zia Street, I have a neurological disability, so if I slur or you can't understand me, please let me know so I can repeat myself. I just am one of what I thought was many, but I raised my hand, people, um, just a little concerned about the overall process, my wife and I just bought our first home here in Coon Rapids in October, so it was a little stressful getting that in the mail. I understand that the $2,000 is lower compared to other cities, but in the grand scheme of things, it's not a little bit of money, uh, as a young family, you know, we're living paycheck to paycheck, I'm disabled, um, we're in the middle of a pandemic, it's tough. The average net worth of a 30-year-old in the US today is like $8,000, so $2,000 is an awful lot of money, I just wanted to make sure that there was some thought given to the fact that this isn't a business-as-usual timeframe, it's like, I know it's like, oh, we did this last year, five years ago, and this is how this goes, I wanted to make sure that there was some thought given to the fact that we are living in, sorry, we are living in an extraordinary time, and so I don't know what percentage, um, of the total cost needs to be special assessment for you to get your bonding, but I want to make sure there's some thought given to reduce thing. The other question I had is in the letters, it said that, um, there was like a way to appeal this, but there wasn't any instruction on how to appeal it, which kind of bummed me out, I know you don't have to provide one, um, you're following the Minnesota state statute, right, but you're doing what you need to, but like, we can do better than that, right, like, we don't have to just do the, like, you can give more information, that, and it just also kind of sucks as a disabled person, like, I'm never not going to be disabled, I'm never going to be able to go work, so deferring something and having it as high interest rate isn't actually that helpful, so my primary question is how do we make the appeal, I know I literally have to do it before you bang the gavel again, we have a pen and paper ready to write something down if we can, um, and then secondarily, I want to make sure that there is some difference given to the extraordinary times that we're in, um, in terms of how much of an assessment was given off to everyone, thank you.
Okay, hang on a second, um, so, Mr. Brody, do we have his name and?
What we'll have you do is just simply put your name and, and your address, and simply say, I object to the assessment, and we'll take that as, uh, as your objection as.
Perfect, thank you.
And then we'll do that before we.
Matt, you want to grab the microphone if he was done?
Thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Was, was there any answer about the assessment with the extraordinary?
I don't think we have.
So, that's no?
I, I think that would be, I think that would be fair.
Yeah, I, I think, if I may, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Johnson?
You know, I, I think that's fair in terms of, of the manner in which we're assessing properties, because, um, what the city has done to be fair to all homeowners of any type, regardless of, um, disability or age or anything else, is to create essentially for single-family homeowners a flat fee, where the city ends up paying, depending on how you look at it, between 50 and 70% of the cost of the improvement, and the homeowner then pays significantly less than surrounding communities, and that was done intentionally to try to keep, um, the tax impact lower in Coon Rapids, the property tax impact lower in Coon Rapids than in some of our surrounding communities. I do think that there, you know, there have been some years in which we have been extraordinarily aggressive on, uh, which I think was needed in the city of Coon Rapids on street reconstruction, and there is less of that now, in part because of how aggressive we've been, um, in other areas of the city over the last several years, um, but I would say that this neighborhood has come to our attention because of its age, and because, um, those streets are right in the zone of being ready to be updated, and hopefully that will, um, in order, not only to a property value benefit, um, but also to just it being a nicer neighborhood with perhaps, and we heard this earlier, perhaps some smoother sidewalks and more sidewalks and more connectivity, um, and, and slightly better services for, for you and, and your neighbors, um, so that's, that's kind of what I would say with respect to that.
And, and just so, the, the way this works is it'll be assessed this year, but it'll be added to the 2023 property taxes, not to minimize the amount, it's still, it's still $255 a year, but that'll get added to your property taxes if you have a mortgage that, a mortgage company that pays your property taxes that you escrow for, um, it'll mean your, your house payment's going to go up like $21 a month, you know, in 2023, so, again, not trying to minimize it, I'm just trying to, that's when it'll kick in, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Is anybody here else to address council for the assessment hearing, public hearing? Anybody else here to address council for the assessment hearing, the public hearing? Hearing no one, then we will close the public hearing. And, council, any questions for Mr. Hanson, or what are your wishes?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Carlson?
I make a motion that under B, we adopt Resolution number 22 dash two sub six A, ordering the improvement.
Second.
Motion by Carlson, second by Griszkowiak, uh, again, we need a supermajority on this, is there any discussion, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and that motion carries with that supermajority unanimously.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Carlson?
I'd then make a motion that we adopt Resolution number 22 dash two sub eight, approving plans and specifications and ordering advertisement for bids.
Second.
Motion by Carlson, second by Griszkowiak, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and that motion carries, um, and everybody that's involved with this reconstruction, make sure you pay attention to what gets sent out, check out the city's website, there's videos explaining lots of things, attend the open houses if you can, and if you ever have any questions, Mr. Hanson really is that conscientious, he will let you know what's going on.
Is this card's available at the end of the table, I need to be in the council chambers here for a little bit longer, but after that, I'll be available, if anyone wants to talk out in the hallway about specific concerns that they didn't want to get up here and talk about, I'll be here for however long to answer your questions.
Right, yeah, just because we close the public hearing doesn't mean you can't ask other questions. All right, um, Mr. Hanson, are you there for item 11 now, or that's, no, Mr. Stemwaddle? We're going to consider award of contracts for fire station number three, Project 21 dash 65, that's something I should have pointed out to the scouts, we're looking at building a new fire station in town, guys, that's a pretty cool project, Mr. Stemwaddle?
Yes, and mayor and council, the, um, the title's a little bit misleading, just in the sense that.
that we're not actually asking you to award contracts tonight. And for reasons I'll explain in a second, but back on December 21st, the council did approve the bid process for Fire Station Three. Those bids were opened on February 3rd, and there were a few issues with just a small handful of the bids. And so what we're asking council to do tonight is consider that three of the bids did not receive any sort of bid, therefore what staff is proposing is to get quotes out on the open market. There are of a dollar amount that falls under the straight state threshold for bidding anyway, so there are things that we could quote for, but we would ask that council approve that process. And then we had three bids, three sets of bids that came back with some issues, missing documentation, things like that on behalf of the bidder. And it put us in a position where the difference between the low bid and next bid was significant enough that we felt like we needed to rebid those items just to make sure we're getting the most effective price for the city. So the recommendation therefore is to hold off on awarding any of the bids until such a point where we can complete this process as I described, and so we will vote for quotations on final cleaning, precast concrete, and roller window shades. And then we'd ask that council reject bids for categories 8A door hardware and material, 8B fourfold and sectional doors, and 10B signage, and to authorize staff to re-advertise those for bids. If that is approved, what we anticipate is coming back to council on the March 22nd meeting with all of the other bids that were good, plus these ones that we will be rebidding and present to you a total project at that time.
Thank you. Mr. Brody, since these, one is to solicit quotes and the other one is to reject bids, do you want these separate?
I agree with the best way to do that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody have any questions of Mr. Stemwaddle or?
Nope. Your Honor?
Councilmember Johnson?
I make a motion to authorize staff to solicit quotes for bid categories 1 capital A, final cleaning, 3 capital B, precast concrete, and 12 capital A, roller window shades.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Ray Rower. Discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries.
And your honor, I'd follow that with a motion to reject all bids for categories 8 capital A, door and hardware material, 8 capital B, fourfold and sectional doors, and 10 capital B, signage, and authorize staff to re-advertise for bids.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Ray Rower. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. The next item is, item 12, to consider planning case 22-3, consider adoption of ordinance 2260 rezoning 3745 Main Street Vista Outdoor. Mr. Fernelius?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and council. I have, oops, that's a street reconstruction project. You've already seen that.
Go through that again.
There we go. So I just have a real short presentation, abbreviated presentation, as you recall, you reviewed this particular application at your last meeting on February 2nd. And so this is, an action tonight relates to an ordinance to rezone the Vista Outdoors property, also known as Federal Cartridge, which is off of Main Street, Round Lake Boulevard, and south of Highway 10, right on our border with the city of Anoka. The site is minimally developed right now, it's mostly used for, for storage. There are a number of those small powder huts that the company uses for storage. They do have interest in constructing a warehouse, and as you recall from our last discussion, this particular property is located within the North Star Overlay District, which was created back in 2009, with, I think, the intent that at some point, if Vista Outdoors or Federal Cartridge, as they were known at the time, was not interested in developing the parcel, which in total is about 75 acres, that there was an opportunity for the city to kind of create a different vision, a non-industrial vision, you know, including corporate office, hotel, research and development, those kinds of uses. That was the intent. Federal Cartridge at the time participated in that process, agreed to it, and really we've had those regulations that overlay in place since that time. Their business has changed, they are obviously very busy, they're expanding their operation, they're now interested in constructing a warehouse. The way that that overlay district is structured, a warehouse use is not permitted. So among the options that we talked about was the idea of rezoning the property, essentially removing the overlay district from a portion of the site that we have highlighted here. Again, the total site is roughly 75 acres, and I think it's roughly, what is it, 29 acres are about 40% of the site that would be removed from the overlay. The balance of the site would still have that overlay in place, so if things change over time, there is the ability to at least preserve that option for, for a portion of the site. The action tonight relates to a zoning matter, and really it's about removing the overlay and then allowing the underlying industrial zoning designation to regulate how the site can be used. So it would be regulated like any other industrial property in our, in our community. It's not related to a specific proposal. Vista does have a site plan application that you're probably aware of, that the Planning Commission will consider on Thursday night, but tonight's action is, really relates to the zoning policy decision. Are we comfortable with the idea of an industrial use? And we're not really prepared to address questions specifically about the site plan. I believe the applicant has a couple of representatives here, I think their architect is online. So if there are questions about the use, is there a concern about the use, I think those things can be addressed tonight, but we're really not going to get into the specifics of the site plan. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
So, Mr. Fernelius, just for clarification, I know we've been talking about the zoning on it, because the warehouse is not possible in that North Star Overlay District. Now, couldn't that be amended? Couldn't the language in the North Star Overlay District be amended to allow a warehouse?
We talked about that possibility at one point. I will say that the conversation was challenging in part because we didn't really understand how we might want to do that, and so we simply discussed the idea of lifting the overlay, preserving the industrial zoning that is there right now, rather than trying to tweak the existing code. Yes, that's an option, if the council is interested in doing that. We would need to act on this, we have a land use application in front of us, so if council's not comfortable with that, wants us to go back to the drawing board, you would need to take action on this, you know, this particular application. We couldn't switch midstream and modify the code, we'd really have to kind of start that process over.
Sure. Yeah, I guess I'm just wondering, because it just seems like we're rolling right from a regional shopping area to industrial, and I'm just wondering if there's some way to temper that. And where are we at on the 60 days?
So on the 60-day clock, we would have some flexibility to extend it, I think, out to April. They applied in December, the 60-day clock would normally expire, we did extend it, I think, to April 12th, so we would have time to potentially postpone it if, if there's interest in doing that tonight.
Okay. I have a, I have an interest in, I would, I think we should talk about it further myself, but.
If I might.
Councilmember Johnson?
Do we have another workshop between now and, and when this would expire?
Yeah, oh yeah. So Mayor, council, yes, we'd have a couple of opportunities to discuss that at a work session if council were interested. I believe we could, either prior to the March 1st agenda, on March 8th, we have our full work session, we can move some things around to fit it within that if you'd like. We're not meeting on our typical third Tuesday of the month for the second meeting, we actually moved that back week to the fourth. So if the timeline, in this particular case, is out to April, we would have a few opportunities in the next several weeks to discuss it. If, if council wanted to have more discussion, as Grant mentioned, you would ultimately have to make a decision as it's been presented, but council does have the option to table this in order to have that discussion if they would like.
So I think I've been really clear on this project, that I want to get to a point where we can say yes on the project. I mean, it's, Vista and Federal Cartridge historically has been such an amazing citizen in our community, and I would like there to be real, wholehearted support from the city council for any project that they ultimately want to do. I think it does seem to me that, that there is some more discussion that the council might want to have with respect to this, so with that, I'd make a motion to table this agenda item until a future date, but within the time period that we have. And I would take direction from staff as to when that might be an appropriate time so that we could have a meaningful discussion about it.
Second.
Here we have a motion and a second to table this item. There's no discussion on that, so all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and this motion is tabled.
And then is, just for the applicant, because I think it's important for them to have a sense of this, and I feel like I'm putting you on the spot, Mr. Stemwaddle, but, but do you, do you have a, an idea when we might be able to get together as a council in a workshop and talk it through?
Yeah, Mayor, council, I would say the March 8th would probably be the most appropriate time, because those pre-council work sessions are short, so I think we'd want to allow for sufficient time for discussion. The only real opportunity we have for that would be March 8th work session, so I will plan to place this conversation on that meeting, and we'll take it from there.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Fernelius, if you could look into that, changing the language of that other North Star Overlay.
We can, we can be prepared to.
Yeah, that would be an interesting conversation. Okay, thank you. All right, and we're on to, that was 12. Item 13, we're looking to consider adoption of ordinance 2261, revising Chapter 3-220, Sustainable Community Commission. Item 13, all right, anything, Olivia, anything you want to go over here, or, I think we kind of, we talked about it last time, didn't we? Yeah. Council have any questions they want covered on this?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Carlson?
I make a motion, we adopt ordinance 2261, admitting Chapter 3-220, Sustainability, Sustainable Community Commission.
Second.
Motion by Carlson, second by Hernandez Jr. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? And that motion carries. We're under item, we're under new business now. Item 14, consider Resolution 22-4-8, accepting plans and specifications for miscellaneous city parking lot and trail reconstruction, and authorize solicitation of bids. Do you want me to just kind of hit the bullet points here, Mr. Hanson? We're looking at some parking lot work and drainage improvements around City Hall, parking lot for the West Water Treatment Plant, trail reconstruction at Aspen Park and ADA pedestrian curb ramp installations, trail reconstruction and basketball court replacement, and ADA pedestrian curb at Cardinal Woods Park, Wildwood Park, trail relocation and installation of a new culvert, Kennedy Park tennis court replacement, Epiphany Park basketball court replacement, Mercy Park basketball court replacement, Bunker Hills Dog Park trail extension, a new trail connection, 315 linear feet, ADA pedestrian curb ramp installation, and on Avicet Street, an ADA curb ramp and trail location, 135 linear feet, and with an ADA pedestrian curb ramp installation. And if we move forward with this, it'll be advertised in March with a bid opening scheduled for April, April 8th, and we'd be looking at getting the work scheduled to take place between June and August.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Ray Rower?
I make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 22-4-8, approving plans and specifications, and ordering advertisement for bids for the 2022 miscellaneous city parking lot and trail reconstruction project.
Second.
Motion by Ray Rower, second by Grischoviac. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? And that motion carries. I had to call in Brad, because I felt so bad, forgetting his last name earlier, you know, and it was a pretty, it was a tie, solid tie. All right. Item 15, consider resolution, is that what we just did? Nope. Consider Resolution 22-5-8, approving plans and specifications, and ordering ad for bids for annual street maintenance program. And we are, we are still the lead agency for now 14 cities for the North Metro Street Maintenance Program. We've been doing this since 2004, and current cities are Andover, Arden Hills, Brooklyn Center, Columbia Heights, Circle Pines, Coon Rapids, East Bethel, Fridley, Ham Lake, Mottamidi, Mounds View, Rogers, and St. Francis. And the city of Coon Rapids will participate in pavement markings, crack sealing, and fog sealing, streets and trail contracts. This gives us a very large economy of scale, saves us a lot of money when we partner with all those other communities. Mr. Hanson, anything you want to add to that?
I think you pretty well summarized it. It's our annual street maintenance program contract, so we've been doing this for many, many years. It's, it's worked out very successfully for the city and achieved an, an economy of price scale for all of the work that all of us, the surrounding cities in Coon Rapids has to do, so.
Excellent. Thank you. Any questions, Mr. Hanson?
Your Honor.
Councilmember Ray Rower?
I make a motion to adopt Resolution 22-5-8, approving plans and specifications, and ordering advertisement for bids for the 2022 street maintenance program.
Second.
Motion by Ray Rower, second by Carlson. Is there any discussion on that?
Your Honor.
Councilmember Ray Rower?
I, again, I just value our street reconstruction and, and maintenance programs, and I believe that is why our streets can go 30, 35 years, as Councilmember Carlson asked how old they were, and, and that's how we keep our costs lower also, so, thank you.
All right, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. And we are on to item 16, consider a settlement agreement with North Star Improvements LLC. This is, we're looking at the Pheasant Hollow Preliminary Platte A4 Lot Development for a 40-acre property north of Rapids Honda. I had a question, Mr. Brody, on this. We're looking at a settlement amount of $45,000, and then, it's $45,000, and then there's no park dedication fees, so it's essentially $53,000, because we're not getting any park dedication fees. Okay, just wanted to make sure I understood that. Do you want to cover anything on this? Mr. Brody?
Again, this is that settlement agreement, they are going to come in for, as part of that settlement agreement for final plat, that final plat will include the 20-foot trail easement that the city has been seeking. That didn't get any smaller, any less, it's exactly where we want it to be. It also has an additional corner up in the one side, we have a little bit more space for, to work up there. I think it's a little swampy to be able to maneuver around that, so it was beneficial from the city's perspective for that, for the actual trail easement. You've explained what we're, what we're doing in exchange for that. We're also going to vacate, there's that old road easement that was ordered by a court, and that's going to be the next item on here that we're going to get rid of, that was essentially as driveway was a public roadway, and we're going to clean that up, which is also a positive for the city, and to be frank, for the developer as well. So that's part of this as well. And so they've taken the step of applying for the final plat with the city, so you'll see that at a, probably the mid, the March meeting, the second one. That'll be the first step, and as long as that gets recorded along with this easement for that trail, then we'll be obligated on the $45,000. I think in the end, it took a long time to get here, obviously we value this taxpayer money, we don't like to spend it without, without just cause, and we think it is cause here to do that, and so I would ask that you would approve the agreement and accept the, the easement from North Star Improvements.
Yeah, and? And finally, coming to terms with this, it's going to put four really nice new homes there on the tax rolls, and it's going to be great.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Johnson?
I move approval of the settlement agreement with North Star Improvements DBA. How do you pronounce it?
Nysley.
Thank you, good, I got it right. Homes, along with the acceptance of the easement agreement, and authorized you, the mayor, and the city manager to execute the settlement agreement.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Carlson. Is there further discussion on this?
I just think it's a really good thing to help us basically move forward on our vision of tying those trails together, so.
Yeah. All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and that motion carries. And just for you guys who are keeping track, we've got three items left. Stellar hanging in there. All right. Item seventeen, consider resolution 22-33 calling for a public hearing to vacate a public roadway easement. Mr. Brody, we already kind of covered part of this.
Yeah, Your Honor, I did mention this is part of the, this is part of our previous action. Normally, this would be just under consent agenda, but given that it was related, we put it here. As you can see from the legal description, it talks about seven feet from a garage and exhibit that no longer exists, so I think the challenge will be trying to get this recorded, but I think in the end, it's a positive piece to get rid of this particular roadway easement.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Johnson?
I move adoption of resolution 22-33, which calls for a public hearing on March 22nd, 2022, for a vacation of a public roadway easement as described.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Hernandez Jr. Any further discussion on this?
Mayor?
Councilmember Grisgovia?
If I could just have a clarification on what becomes of that stretch that the city was plowing for all those years, and when we vacate that, because at some point, there's probably going to be a trail right over that, correct?
The ownership of it will go to the underlying landholder, which would be, in this case, at least as of now, North Star Improvements, subject, of course, to that trail easement. I also think there's a utility easement over that same area as well. So it'll still be subject to those easements, it just won't be subject to the roadway easement.
So this easement will be part of what we just voted on? Right?
The other two separate. Right now, there already is a roadway easement there. We're going to get rid of that, and it won't show on the new plat, but will show on the new plat and then the new easement, when it's recorded, as the utility easement and the new trail easement, but we'll not show this roadway easement because we'll vacate it.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion? We have a motion and a second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and that motion carries. Item eighteen is to consider authorization of a memorandum of understanding for a beekeeping pilot program. Beekeeping has been a recurring topic of interest for the city, and Coon Rapids does not currently allow for beekeeping in the city. Olivia, do you want to present, or do you want me to read your bullet points, or what would you like me to do here?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, I can provide just a brief overview. The memo outlines the history of this topic. In recent years, we were able to have a work session with you all in October of last year after we had heard interest from residents in conducting a pilot program for beekeeping at our community garden site. We drafted a program overview with some different stipulations and were able to discuss it with you last fall. As spring is slowly but surely approaching, our resident beekeepers are starting to make plans unless it is time to bring the formal MOU to you for approval. The program outline stands in pretty much the same form that we discussed in October. We are allowing for two bee hives per site at up to two sites, including the community garden and the West Water Treatment Plant, and the program would run through the end of this calendar year. The beekeepers would provide us with a honeybee management plan that outlines how they intend to keep and maintain these hives, and I think would provide a great opportunity for us to learn about beekeeping in Coon Rapids and evaluate at the end of the pilot how we would like to move forward.
Excellent. And the parking lot reconstruction at the West Water Treatment Plant isn't going to mess with the beekeeping?
Mr. Mayor, no. That would not interfere. We plan on doing a site walk in the coming weeks with the staff members who manage that site to make sure that we choose a location that is suitable for the whole summer.
Excellent. Councilmember Carlson?
Make a motion. The City Council authorized the mayor and city manager to enter into the attached memorandum of understanding with Michael Fisher and Jennifer Amundson.
Second.
Motion by Carlson, second by Rayrower. And that's the first time we heard their names, and those are the two individuals that we're agreeing with. Okay. Very good. Discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Carlson?
I have one question. So we have two beekeepers, boy, that's a tough one, two beekeepers ready to go, and we have four spots. So is it first come, first served, or?
So, Councilmember Carlson, this will be a program that they both operate together. They work in partnership now for their beekeeping operations in other areas around the metro, so they will be sharing equipment and resources with each other and operating the up to four total hives in conjunction.
Thank you.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Rayrower?
I just wanted to share that I'm very excited about this pilot project, and keep in mind, it's honeybees, so they are docile unless attacked or provoked. This is not wasps or hornets or anything like that. And our bee populations had a significant drop a few years ago. They're coming back now, but our pollinators are very important, you know, for wild plants, but also our crops, so I just think it's great that we're introducing this pilot program.
All right. Any further discussion? We have a motion and a second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and that motion carries. Thank you, Olivia. All right. Item nineteen is to consider a settlement agreement for reasonable accommodation with Maraki Recovery. I can't imagine council needs any more information on this. Mr. Brody, any bullet points you want to hit, or?
The memo does outline, it's the agreement, our council, Jessica Schwi is also on Zoom if necessary to answer any questions. I guess I just hit a couple of them. We are going to grant a reasonable accommodation to allow for seven people instead of six, but as a condition of that, and I think that's the important part, is one, there's no money being exchanged as part of the settlement, two, they're going to have to retain a rental license like anybody else, but they're going to have to go above and beyond by having a property inspection done and ensure that the bedrooms, in fact, are bedrooms, the bathrooms are bathrooms. We outline what that is. That seventh person is going to be a house manager, and they're going to be required to abide by their own rules as a house manager, and also ensure that the rules and ordinances of the city are followed by the residents. There's a provision in here that provides for if the use is no longer needed, the accommodation goes away, the rental license gets removed, for whatever reason, the accommodation goes away. So it does really kind of encompass the entire process, and so we think it's a positive for the city from that perspective. I can also tell you that Maraki was in the city today making the first steps to applying for that rental license, so much like our last case that we settled on, they're taking those steps that are required of them, and so I ask that you would approve the settlement agreement and the associated reasonable accommodation.
Very good.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Johnson?
I move approval of the settlement agreement with Maraki Recovery Housing LLC and to authorize you, the mayor, and the city manager to execute the agreement.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Rayrower. Is there further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Johnson?
So I just want to publicly thank the city attorney, Mr. Brody, also Kennedy and Graven, our legal advisors and representatives in this matter, and also all the rest of the members of the City Council, including Wade Demmer, who was here when this matter came before the council. I think it is an example of how a city should, a public body should, address issues like this. I also want to thank the council for being open-minded on the reasonable accommodation that's being requested, and also thank Maraki for starting the process with the city and entering into these settlement negotiations. Thank you.
All right, very good. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and that motion carries. That's the last item on our regular business, now we're to our open mic. Is anybody here to address City Council for open mic this evening? Give us your name and address, and you got up to three minutes for city business.
Sean Gillett, my address is 10666 Kildare Street. Got that right this time. Won't need three minutes, hardly any of it, but I do want to thank the City Council. About seven years ago, our homeowners association, the Woodland Park Homeowners Association, approached and asked permission for a home improvement area loan. This was a seven-year loan, and so as of this year, we will be paying that off. That loan actually got the twelve units in our area of roofs, siding, eaves, soffits, gutters, even windows and decks, and so there's no way we could have accomplished that without the City Council, and I don't think that these programs are really well-known, and so I just want to get it on the record that if you are out there, if you're part of an association, if you have an organization that may need some help with this kind of funding, come to the city. They will help you, and that really not only improved our property value, but our quality of life, and so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, those are completely mutually beneficial, you know, for us to be able to help improve our housing stock, especially a significant number of units all at one time. Anybody else to address council for open mic this evening? Hearing none, I will close that portion of the meeting. I don't have any reports on previous open mics, and we are to other business. Wow, Mr. Stemwell, I don't think I brought anything tonight.
Mayor, council, just mentioned a few things that are highlighted on the front page of our city website. First would be the Front Door Program. This is a very popular grant program that if you've got sort of significant upgrades you'd like to make to the aesthetic of your home, this is the program for you. So there's, I won't go into the details, it's all out there on the city website. You can call the city as well to get more information. Just keep in mind that it's a grant program and it's a lottery. We get tons of interest in this program. Ultimately, we can't fund all the requests that we do have, so we have to have some way of filtering that out. It's appropriate that we've got staff from Coon Creek Watershed District here. Each year, we are asked by the Nook County Board to consider creating a list, potential appointees to the Coon Creek Watershed District Board of Managers. It's a bit of a complicated appointment process. Again, I won't go into any detail, but if you're someone who might have interest in watershed-related issues, you can find more information, again, on our city website or by calling staff. Ultimately, what the city does is make a recommendation to the board, the county board, that is, and then they have authority to consider our recommendations amongst other recommendations they get from other cities, so it's not a sure thing if we submit a list to them, and that's all I'll mention for now.
All right. I would like to thank everybody that was involved in Snowflake Days, all of the work and energy that went into that, all of our staff that accommodates and helps market all those things and has to help put them together with all of those volunteers, and I know that we ended up being able to have one of the two parades. The first week, both of the parades, both the parades were scheduled for the next week because the weather was terrible. The next week, we got the one in on Tuesday night, and it was an incredibly warm night, and it looked like it was well-attended, and then Thursday night, we were predicting rain, and it was like, yeah, we're not doing this, so. It was a nice opportunity to raise food for the AC/BC food shelf, and I just appreciate everybody that was involved with that. Any other business to come before council this evening?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion by Carlson, second by Johnson to adjourn, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, we're adjourned.